I need stamps on the application that you submitted today from the town clerk and Annie can tell you about it.
Okay, we're live. Good evening. My name is Art Spru. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. This is the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting on May 12th, 2025. It's 5:00 PM. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28th, 2025 signing of the Chap- of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30th, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, Conference ID 755-295-677-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'll begin the meeting with a roll call vote. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Charlene Greenhall, it's present.
Frank Shear.
Frank is present.
Catherine Hoppern.
Catherine Hoppern, present.
And Bob Dubus is absent, and Art Spru, I'm present. We'll begin with, we're going to do another vote on the meeting minutes from March 24th. Just to cover our bases, we may not have had the appropriate amount of votes for the last time we voted this in. We had no changes to these minutes, so this is just going to be a revote on this unless there's other comments.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the March 24th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second. Let's do a roll call vote. Warren.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene.
I approve.
Frank.
Was I present?
Oh, I am, just a minute. Yes, you were.
I approve.
Okay, thank you. And Catherine Hoppern?
Yes, I approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. We will take the minutes now and vote on those for April 28th. Do I have that right? Yeah, April 28th, 2025. I only had one comment on this on page three.
Point of order, you only have three members here who can vote on them.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Although technically you can vote on approving minutes even if you were not there. Robert Rules of Orders allow someone, it was not all you're doing is saying that the meeting occurred and you agree with the meeting minutes, so.
That's what I thought previously, but.
I did review the video, so I could say.
Okay.
The, there is something wrong because there's only four of us listed as present.
There were only.
There were only four of us, yes.
And Bob Dubus was one of them.
Oh, that's right, okay. Four, we're only seven.
Well, what do you think the process should go?
I think, I think it's fine if we have.
Okay.
We have, we, even if we just have the four people that were present, right? I mean, you won't, oh, no, we have three, I'm sorry.
You only have three.
Okay.
Three.
May I comment?
Please, Catherine, go ahead.
I think it's fine if one has reviewed the video but was absent, Frank could vote. I have not reviewed the video, so I will abstain from voting. But if Frank votes, you have four, and Charlene, we'll leave it up to you to decide what you want to do.
Well, the, let's at least put forth my comments here. I had one edit, and it's on page three for unreleased, bottom of the page, for Evergreen Drange. On the third line and fourth line down is the word reduction, and I asked for that word to be deleted. The that, so that sentence reads, "That proposed timeline include, includes the paved roadway width to 12 feet, starting at the driveway of 13 Evergreen Road, and a cleared roadway width of 18 feet." So the reduction didn't make sense to me because not reducing anything, we're just calling for a specific width. That was the only thing I saw in these minutes. Any other comments by the board members? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote.
You need a motion.
Oops, I apologize. Thank you, Charlie.
You're very welcome.
You can.
Can you make a motion still?
Sure, I move that we approve the April 28th, 2025 meeting minutes as amended by the Chair.
Second.
Okay, Warren.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene.
I'll abstain.
Okay, good. Frank Shear.
Frank Shear, approve.
Catherine Hoppern?
I'll abstain.
Thank you, and Art Spru, I approve. So that's four affirmative on that. All right. Next is site plan approval for 200 Meanie House Road, Sun Self Storage. This is going to be continued.
This will be, they have requested to continue. They still do not have the plans based on our site visit.
Okay, so we'll continue this to June 9th.
And I will so motion that.
No, no surrender in 5:00, is that your typical?
That works for me, yes.
Okay. All right, and the roll call vote, Warren.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter. Approve.
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 And Catherine Hoppern?
Yes, I approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. Okay, that takes us to Site Plan Amendment for 859 Main Street, Clark Engineering.
Good afternoon, David Clark on behalf of 859 Main LLC. Some changes that they'd like to make. One is after the project was completed, the butter to the south had some concerns about the different levels of the pavement between or at the property line. The pavement at 859 is a foot to 18 inches higher than the pavement of the parking lot behind the CVS. So the neighbor to the south felt that was a tripping hazard, and their insurance company agreed. And so what they'd like to do is extend the stockade fence all the way across so that people aren't tempted to traverse that differential in pavement elevation. The second, the refuse contractor does not like the way we set up the dumpster location, and we had it what's, where it's shown on the, on the concrete, it's shown as a concrete pad next to the refrigeration unit behind the building. They tried to set it up there. The width of the gate is just too narrow, and they figured they'll probably do more damage to the gate every time they showed up. So we'd like to move it to the end of the parking alley on the, on the west side. Use a similar fence to enclose it. We're removing some pavement and adding some more for, to support the dumpster. And that's, that's it on the changes. They've been to HBDC and they, and they approved the style of the fence because it matches what's there now.
David, could you show us where that is on the, on the map?
Where it was supposed to be?
It's the gray, the.
Yeah, right, right there.
Yeah, and the, and the, what you're doing now is where it will be.
Pardon me? I got mine. I'm on.
What, where will it be?
Right here.
Okay, that's, and it was behind the building before?
It, they tried to work it into this location, which is where the architect thought it would be the best place. But it's, it's tough to get in and out of.
So you're showing a stockade fence and a gate in front of it, right?
Yes, so it'll be the matching fence, so the fence will, will go up both sides, and, and we'll have a gate to screen it from Route 28.
And, and the extension of the stockade fence at the rear, can you show us where that is?
It starts where it ends now and then runs right along the gutter to this end of the building.
Okay. All right, so why don't we see if there's any comments from the board members? Warren?
I really don't have any comments, and clarification about the stockade fence has already been made, so thank you.
Bob?
I have none.
Charlene?
Just a, because you're in the 100-foot from the bordering vegetated wetland, do you have to go to Concom? Or is it already, it's already pavement there?
That's right, it is.
Yeah, well, we're, we're removing pavement and we're adding pavement. I think.
I would do it as an RDI then, if you have to.
Even that's, is too much for this small change. I do, you know, we still have an open order of conditions with conservation, so we could, we could probably do it as what they call a field change. But good point.
I just wouldn't want you to get it caught.
Frank?
No comment.
Catherine Hoppern, any comments?
No comment, no comment.
Okay, I, I don't have any comments on this, just a clarification. The previous meeting that we had, we talked about the connector sidewalk. Is that still in the, in the works and planned by you, you and your applicant?
No, we looked at that after the meeting. The, the grade change from that parking area down to the sidewalk is too steep. Even with a handrail, you can go to 12 to 1 slope on the sidewalk, and it would still be steeper than that. So it would not meet ADA requirements, so I can't propose something that doesn't meet ADA.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're just going to wait out, you have our $10,000 bucks.
Okay.
So they're, they're $10,000 bucks, and we'll just wait out at Mass Highway and see what they want to do.
Okay. Is, any comments on that point with the board members?
No.
Okay. Then, let's see. Christine, in your notes, do you have any additional things to add based on what?
I did not, but you need to keep that in mind when you're drafting your conditions, your statement of conditions. Put something in about the Conservation Commission, and then if you do want to do something about the connector or the tree, or put something in there to say you're not doing it or whatever.
All right, with.
No, I just want to.
Go ahead.
The, the plan that was in my packet anyway does show the split rail fence on the back on the south side.
There was a revised one that was provided, I think there was a revised one provided, right?
I was only going to say, whatever goes in the final, final folder ought to be what was actually done in place, that's all. Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Annie, who has the, we do have the plan?
Yes.
We each got one.
When they reference the date on the plan.
Copies of the plans were handed out to each of you before this meeting, so it should be there with your packets and other information.
So the reference that we would have is change, Rev. 1, change split rail to stockade, date is for April 15th, 2025. Just if we're going to make a note of this as part of the modification in the conditions. So if there's no other comments or questions, I will. There's someone who would move to approve the site plan with the conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amended site plan with conditions as outlined in the staff report, but changing the date of the plan to April 15th, 2025. Additionally, somebody help me here, I forgot what else we were doing here.
Were we referring them to the Concom at all?
Oh, referring to them also to the Conservation Commission, should that be required. And I'm going to leave out the sidewalk for now because we have the $10,000.
That's correct. I would deal with that as a separate item.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene?
Approve.
Frank?
Approve.
Catherine Hoppern?
Catherine Hoppern approves.
And Art Spru, I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other piece here that is a request for comment from the comprehensive permit for 0 and 1533 Main Street, Penrose. And I think there was some information in the packet, and there was some, there was some good updates that Christine had put together, and I thought it would be good if she reviewed those with the board members. I have some of my comments of my own, but, and we may want to have any comments from the public, too.
So I will stop by saying I did watch the ZBA meeting last week where they opened up the public hearing for this. They will be holding a number of sessions to go over different topic areas within. They have given us until June 1st to get the comments into them from the planning board. We looked at it with regard to site plan review, obviously. And I, so I incorporated some of the comments I had myself with some of the things that were said by the, the zoning board of appeals the other day. They will hear the, the case the next time on June 5th, I believe. So we're thinking that we can go forward, you can give some comments tonight, we can put together a draft, a draft letter, and then you can all review the draft letter at your next meeting on the 19th, and that would still give us plenty of time to get it into them on time. So when I went through your criteria, the first thing, and I think Annie passed these out, given that this is a 48-unit development, is located directly off of Route 28, which is one of the busiest thoroughfares in the town, consideration should be given to making this a right, a right turn only exit onto Route 28. Maybe even consider recommending that development be revised to accommodate a one-way circulation pattern with the right turn exit only. This could potentially reduce the 50-foot-plus continuous pavement swath around the property. So this was something that the DBA was concerned with because by the time you have the, the two-way piece, and then you have the parallel parking, and you have the parking in front, you know, it's a pretty wide path if there are people trying to cross there, and, you know, I mean, they do have crosswalks, but that was a little bit concerning. And a couple of different people recommended that something happened there. The plan set does not show any other traffic controls other than crosswalks, so I don't know if they were going to be putting some type of a speed table or a speed bump. You know, what other things besides the, the stop signs, you know, at, at the entrance and exit. You know, that the exits, I should say. Once the layout is finalized, the locations and types of signage could be shown on the construction plan, so that was the first thing. And the second thing of your criteria, Mr. Chairman, do you want us to comment as she goes?
Well, why don't we do that? Because we're going to go through each one at a time, and I'd have my.
I'm thinking it might be easier if we do do that.
Sure, sure. There are comments about the criteria number one from many of the board members.
I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Catherine.
I just wanted to say I think it's a good idea. I think we should really consider this idea of right turn only and one-way circulation. Given this, some of the space constraints that they're dealing with on the site, it might also help with how they've designed the space and arranged the space, and I do think right turn only is a very good idea to help reduce any traffic issues with the future development of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I think these are good ideas, Christine.
Okay, Frank?
Let's see. I grew up in Brooklyn and, in a neighborhood with a lot of kids, and there were streets with parallel parking, and kids would run out between the. All right, and, and what, and there were accidents. So going to a one-way might help, and also there's going to be elderly people here that are, may not hear very well, et cetera. So you've got the green area and the playground separated by 50 feet of two-way traffic and parallel parking cars, so I'm, I'm worried about safety for the kids. So I think I'm in favor of one-way traffic, and hopefully that would result in a reduction of the width of the superhighway.
Okay, Charlene, did you have something?
I do. I, I totally agree with the, the one-way. I thought that when I saw it the first time. The right lane, right turn only, Mast Dot's going to dictate that.
Yep.
So there's really, you know, I, I would encourage it, or have an, you know, the upper or the most westerly be entrance.
Yes.
And the easterly be exit only.
Yeah.
To create that one-way parking if you can't, you know, create that, you know, right turn only kind of skewed lane that you generally see in those instances. But Mast Dot's going to dictate, you know, whether it's, it can be one-way, you know, just right turn only. Hopefully they will concur, but yes, I do agree.
Okay, I had similar comments, same thing, one-way entrance, west would be the entrance, east would be the exit. I think our criteria calls for in-site plan that if you, and roadways, if you have a one-way, I think you can reduce it from 24 feet down to 20 feet, so I would recommend that. I think it's, Frank, your points are excellent, associated with with pedestrians, or they, they'll, they'll run out between cars without thinking, and this will be, with one-way traffic, they only have to look one way then.
One more.
Go ahead.
There ought to be sleeping policemen or whatever we call them in this country all along that, to make sure that people don't go more than 50 miles an hour.
Yep. The other thing, I'm not as concerned about just the right turn only. I think, you know, the, the only thing that's going to be obstructed is going to be someone trying to exit. They're the ones, you know, if you think about on a restaurant-related parking lot that has one-way circulation, it's very common that when you enter, you enter very much the way we're describing the circulation here. And left turn, if you do that, it will delay people on, within the site. So it's less of an issue there. Where there might be would be if there's a left turn from the westbound Route 28 into the site, but that would be the case no matter what. And again, I think, Charlene, you're right, that's going to have, Mast Dot is going to be the one who, who would deal with that issue.
People, people will figure out it's quicker to go around the roundabout and come back around, right? So I don't think that's going to necessarily be a problem.
So that would be my suggestion. Any other comments?
Actually, oh, I'm sorry, Warren. I think for purpose, I like your, your quiet police or.
Sleeping police. It's a Jamaican.
Okay, actually, a method of that would be to use speed tables where the crosswalks are. It's not a speed bump, which are totally obnoxious, but it's a slightly elevated at the area of the, you know, where the crosswalks are, and they're, they're traffic calming.
Yeah, I'm not sure you have to do it at everyone, but there could be at the end of the first entrance drive and where you're exiting when you're going out. Yeah, one, one, one in each one of those, because that's where probably the higher acceleration could occur, even though it's on a site.
I, I would just put them a couple on each of these rows here.
Right, that's exactly right.
Yeah. They're going to be younger people driving fast.
Yeah, so this was one of the reasons why we suggested doing some draft on this. We thought there was going to be some.
Somebody's going to have a hot rod and they're going to want to do that.
Some recommendations that we would want to review after we do a draft of this. We're going to try and consolidate all of our comments down into a response. And I don't know if it should be here or not, because I didn't see anything about where parking is. So I'll just throw mine in associated with that, because it overlaps several of these. There's a lot of pavement area here. I recommend that there's two locations that are primed to do grass parking. That would be in front of Building 4 and Building 7. Those are the ones at the rear of the site. They, building, in front of Building 4, it's just isolated. They, building, in front of Building Four, it's just isolated over there. There's eight spaces. And Building Seven is on the other, in the easterly end, there's three spaces there. Six spaces there. So there's fourteen spaces that could go to grass parking or some pervious type of material. And it's not really going to affect much, but I, but it will change some of the calculations and reduce the amount of runoff that would go and be collected. So they have some significant infiltration systems on in here, and that might help relieve a little bit of that. That's, it's a recommendation. If the board members think that we should do something different, that's fine with me.
I would just say impervious. I would, I don't know-
Say pervious, call it pervious, okay.
Pervious. Yeah, because I don't know that grass is-
Yeah.
In the long, in the long run, with the traffic that-
Yeah.
In the parking spaces is going to be-
That, that's a good point. I'm, I'm fine with that.
And if they do go to a one-way?
Yep.
That can significantly reduce the amount of pavement.
That's true, too. So we've got a couple of things-
There's no need to keep it wide unless, of course, for some reason, the fire department needs that extra space. But that may be only on the, you know, on the turns at the back of the property.
Well, if you think about it, if it's two-way traffic, it's only twelve feet. So this is twenty feet one-way. And the only thing that they would have to look at is the turning movements at each of the, each of the T intersections. And that's something that they can resolve. Well, there are a lot more on that than I thought there were, but they're good. Warren, do you have others?
I would only endorse Charlene's idea of not speed bumps, but the, what did you call them?
Ra, raised crosswalks.
I know exactly what you're talking about, but-
Speed, speed tables.
Speed tables, yeah.
I would suggest that every, you know, those really don't slow down traffic at all.
Mm-hmm.
They just let you know there's a crosswalk there. So I'd be very much in favor of having those placed at every place there is an obvious crosswalk from-
Yeah.
Well, into the landscaped play areas.
Yeah.
So if that were two or four or however many, I would have one every place. So that-
That's true, too.
So that the raised area would signal a crosswalk, first off, to drivers, as well as signal they should be slowing down.
Okay.
And also, I, I, in my submissions from, for the meeting, somewhere in the Penrose submissions, I saw that they had a traffic study that was going to be completed and finished. I have not seen anything about that.
That was in the packet, yes.
That was in the packet?
Take a look at that, and if you have additional comments on that, you know, we'll have time for next week to do final letters.
I was, I was looking for, you know, something in the way of a specific document that had traffic study.
Yep.
If that's been done and incorporated into this, that's fine. I don't know if that traffic study was meant to also be onsite as well as on and off of 28.
Both.
On and off 28 was my principal concern.
Yeah.
And so that's fine if it's there.
Mr. Chair, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
So with regard to the traffic study, I would tell you that they have done one traffic study. There are going to be an opportunity for what they call peer reviews, so they have other consultants look. So they're looking to hire, they being, the ZBA is looking to hire consultants to do peer reviews. And so they're, they're possibly looking at a second traffic study to confirm the findings of the first one. And, you know, they can ask the questions. That way the ZBA can structure what the traffic study will include. So we can make recommendations with regard to that.
I'm assuming once we get some of these peer review comments, we, we could get, our board members could get a look at those just in case something-
Yes.
Strikes us as-
You will have, you will probably most likely, from what they're saying, have multiple opportunities to offer comment. This is to get everything started.
All right. Let's move on to criteria two. Christine, why don't you lead us?
So most of this is the same thing. It's got to do with circulation pedestrian. So a lot of it you've already, you've already discussed. So they do appear to provide walkways around the whole site. They provide access to all of the buildings. So that is a positive.
Okay. Any comments on two? They're sort of rolled in. Actually, three is my parking piece that you can put my comments associated with those parking spaces in front of Building Four and Seven. I was trying to look and saying, I said, there had to be something about parking in here. Any other comments about criteria three? Frank?
Yeah, I just have a question to Christine. The, you point out that this reduction of seven is within the realm of other planning board granted waivers for parking. Granted waivers for parking for residences or?
Well, it's, I'm not suggesting we waive the spaces.
No, no, no. I'm just, this is just a question of fact. I, I just wonder-
So they, the, they being, Penrose has asked for a reduction in, in the number of spaces to seven.
It's just your, your comment that-
Oh, it's concerning?
It appears to be within the realm of other planning board-
Yes.
Granted waivers for parking. And I wonder whether that was with respect to parking for apartment-type residences.
No, not necessarily. Just some of the more recent things that you have done, you have reduced parking. So that's what I was trying to get across, if I was not clear to you. You have reduced in that, you know, when you actually look at the number, it is just seven spaces.
Sure.
They required, they were requesting the one point eight five.
I understand.
But it's not.
But what we've done in the past is not seven for this kind of development.
No, that is correct.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yes, yes.
Well, if, if board members think that we should make a comment on this, that we, do we support a waiver? I mean, I, that would be okay. Or you could be silent on it.
I'm, I'm a little concerned. That's, that's forty-eight units, seven, seven short.
Short.
That's of two each. Right, of two each. So, so are there seven, one, one adult families in this development? And are there none where there are two kids that both have cars? I mean, it just, and what about any visitors? I mean, it just doesn't seem like two is enough.
Yeah.
So I, I would, I would tend to not give that, that waiver.
Okay. Catherine, I think you, you wanted to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment that we have also recommended that one-way circulation and reduction of the paved area for the two-way roadway. That's going to open up space that they may not need to ask for this reduction of seven spaces. And also, if I can jump ahead a little bit, I know there are some concerns of some of the abutters and about, especially about the southern border and the visibility from the buildings on the southern lot line to the other neighbors, to the abutters. I'm going to suggest some redesign of the whole site plan. And also, I think in the process of that redesign, to address those abutters concerns. And I think in the whole process of redesign from both of these issues, the one-way circulation and the abutters concerns about the southern border, that, that may avoid the need for a parking waiver of seven spaces. So I would suggest that it's good to get the board's opinions, but we need to combine this with all the other concerns.
Okay, Catherine, thank you. So I, I know there's going to be some public comment. I'd like to get through the board's comment first, and because we may address some of the comments that the public may have, and that would be helpful. But I, after the board finishes their comments in here, I will open it up to public to actually-
On, on the parking question?
Sure.
There are eighty-six bedrooms proposed in the units. So that leads me to say no waiver for, for parking. That's kind of where I'm coming out.
Okay, yeah. I'd agree with that, but this is Catherine.
Go ahead. Oh, you, okay, I got it.
I was just, I was just going to agree with Frank and Bob Wurzshafter. I, I would be leaning towards not granting a waiver, but also just what I said. Let's take a look at it to see how our other recommendations are handled. Because that might mean that they don't need to ask for a waiver.
Okay, so I would suggest that in the draft that we put together is we would start with saying, we don't think that they should be waived. And we could make a modification to that when we do a final review next week for that.
I actually don't have a problem with the waiver, but I will stand with my fellow board members.
Yeah.
And I do agree with Catherine that if there is a reduction in the amount of pavement-
Yeah.
Because of the one-way, then they, they can easily recoup those-
Correct.
Seven spaces.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, Warren?
Just like to add my support to the rejection of a waiver.
Okay.
I, I personally believe that the parking spaces that, without a waiver, are very marginal and perhaps inadequate for the site.
Yep.
And including the fact that I believe there are only three handicap parking spaces for the entire unit.
Yep.
Entire development. It's hard for me to believe that that's going to be adequate or that they're going to be located in the spaces where people who need them would not have to walk all the way around the whole development to get to their, get to their house. Those points were raised in the initial Penrose presentation, but I haven't seen anything that reflects any adjustments in their plan with respect to those comments. But at any rate, with respect to the immediate question of a, of a waiver, I'm not in favor.
Yeah. I, I take a viewpoint to that. This is sites that have come before our board where applicants try to put more than what the site really should comfortably handle forces issues with parking. And parking is the, the item that everyone tries to waive. We don't need any, we don't need that. We need fewer than this. And it, it runs into a problem. And this is like a self-contained site. It's not like you can go park someplace else. So I'm, I'm initially thinking that I concur with the majority of the board members.
I would just like to add that issues that have to do with health and safety and, or must be responded to by the applicant. And I think not having enough parking spaces is a safety issue. Because you're going to have people coming in and squeezing over to the side and reducing the roadway. And I think it is a safety issue.
They could be parking on the roadway then if it's a one-way. I've seen that happen quite often. So that's, that's a possibility if there's insufficient-
It's not just a convenience issue. It's more than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to, I think we're on item four now? Is that right?
Yeah, so the only other thing I would say about number three was that the ZBA and a number of the participants that were there had, had suggested about having assigned spaces. Right now, there are no assigned spaces on site. So if that's something that you feel passionate about, you should say that as well.
Actually, I think that's a very good idea.
Oh, really?
I do.
I, I feel passionate about not having assigned spaces.
Again, we had raised that, that issue in our initial discussion of this. And I'm very much in favor. If you're going to have people that are living there, they ought to know where they can park. And having assigned spaces is, I think, the only assured way of doing that. So I'd certainly be in favor of that, only because it's a housing development.
Let me just add that if, I, I've lived in situations like this several times without assigned spaces. And as long as you have a number, an adequate number of parking places-
Yep.
You're, you're, you're fine. The problem with assigned spaces is that you're going to need, I think, many more spaces.
Yeah. Exactly. All right. So Bob, you, you have anything?
Yeah, I, well, I, I was going to say this is probably not something that we should delve into other than how many spaces there are. And, and I, I mean, I, I hear what Warren's saying about handicap, but that we, we need to let them rent the place to somebody that needs a handicap space and then designate a handicap space for that person.
Is there anything to prevent the management company putting, putting the assigned spaces on here after, whether they're? No, I think, I think this could be something that the management company could do. And I'm initially thinking, agreeing with you, Bob, that let this be open right now. And if it gets to be an issue, the management company could certainly put assignments, maybe at least a space per unit or something like that as an initial part of it.
That's kind of where I was going.
Yeah.
But as far as, I believe, at least one unit is required to be accessible in this development. I believe, five units.
Right.
So, you know, they're going to put the, the disability access spaces by those units.
By those units, yeah.
You know, they're, they're going to coordinate that. And they may find that they do need to have more than-
Yeah.
The three spaces. But not everybody who may have a disability, it needs, you know, an HP-
Correct.
Or space. So there's, there's all kinds of disabilities.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to four? Okay.
So four has to do with the location arrangement, size, design, and general site compatibility of buildings, lighting, and signs. So this one obviously is a little bit longer. Again, there were concerns expressed about over the buildings in excess of, of the thirty-feet height minimums or maximums. I know that the planning board felt very strongly about that with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So maybe, I don't know if you want to consider making a recommendation with regard to that. The proposal does not appear to have adequate lighting with most fixtures appearing on Ballard Lights, which is good that they have low or dark sky lighting is what they call it. They do show a pole footprint. They kind of show where the poles are. They're not quite, it's not clear on the plans exactly where. So we want to make sure that we, that that was all shown on the plans. But there was some concern. I noticed that on the lighting plan, which is the last plan of the package, the first package that you received, has, has some spillover in a couple of locations. So the light, the light is going to spill over on some of the abutters. So that is somewhat concerning to me. As somebody who lives near a, a private school that has spillover, it becomes a problem after a while. I mean, I know that they want to do safety and, and things like that, but maybe they should take some more consideration into how and where they place their, their lighting. The other thing with that would be, another topic that was brought up was the, the building size themselves. Maybe they could consider having some smaller, some, some smaller sized buildings, you know, change it up a little bit. I don't know if that will go forward or not. Another thing was the community building at the front, whether or not they really need that because you have so many community, different things here in town. So whether they need to have their own, their own separate building. Maybe they could have more units there and take down the size of some of the other units or do some modification that way. That, again, that community building is in the front and the middle. And I know it has the management building, the management office, so they will still need that. But that is something you should consider. Oh, the other thing was the signage, as mentioned above. We talked about the vehicular signage. You know, they need to kind of give a little bit more on that. I know I see just the two stop signs at the front, and I do see two entrance signs. I'm sure that they've worked with the HBDC on the two entrance signs. But if they, you know, they should just make it very clear that if they start putting signs on the buildings and all of those other things, that those would need some type of a review to make sure that they were okay. That's the biggest things for that.
All right, let, I'd like to begin with Catherine. If you have any comments about this criteria four?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to comment on the thirty-foot height. I agree with the suggestion. I think, I think the planning board was open to maybe considering going above the thirty-foot height, which is a townwide requirement. But we didn't in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And so I think I agree with the suggestion that we should ask for thirty-foot height as the maximum for this development as well. I agree with all the points Christine made about lighting that needs to be reviewed and corrected, that there is no overflow onto abutting properties. And with the, all the points about vehicular signage, et cetera, et cetera. The one point I would like to add, which is actually a pretty major point, is I understand that there are concerns from a number of the abutters about the proximity of the bill. If you look at the site plan overall, the proximity of the buildings, especially along the southern lot line, the southern border, is they are very close to the homes of the abutters and that you could even look into their windows, something like that. I would like to request and recommend that there be a redesign of- I would like to request and recommend that there be a redesign of the site plan. I think the space can be rearranged. I used to do comprehensive plan and master plan design. I think the space can be rearranged, especially with some of the requests that the planning board has made tonight about the one-way circulation and so on. The space can be rearranged so that the buildings that are right along that southern border can be moved to the north and the circulation roadways can be put more south. It might mean a reduction of the central recreation space and so on. If we combine that with some of the other suggestions, that some of the buildings be reduced in size or that the, the community building be reduced in size, et cetera, I think it can be easily, the space can easily be reorganized to address those concerns of the abutters about privacy and also add a evergreen vegetated buffer landscape screening along the southern border for the sake of privacy to the southerly abutters. So that's one suggestion. It does involve some reorganization of the space, but I think it can be done.
Okay.
And that would be my comment on the location, arrangement, size, design, and general site compatibility of buildings, lighting and signs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go to Frank, Frank next?
I agree with Kathleen's comments. The area in the back is zone residential. The area in the front is, is mixed, so I think that area has to be dealt with, with more sensitivity than the rest of the development. And very close to those, you know, relatively large buildings, which on their own are quite attractive, actually. I don't have a problem with the architecture if it weren't in Chatham, let me put it that way. They're, they're too big and/or too close and/or there's not enough shielding. So I believe that the Penrose has to consider steps to respect the interests of, of the abutters and their, and their interest in, in privacy. And giving some distance from the activities and noise that's likely to be generated. I think that's very important. So I, I would concur. On, on lighting, I just wanted to add that, and I think I've said this before, so I may be, I think all lighting should be warm, not, not fluorescent type lighting. And in, in my mind, that means lighting around 300 Kelvin. If you, if you go up to 4,000 or 5,000 Kelvin, that's a fluorescent type. And it's simply ugly. And if those poles are too high, I, I don't know how high the poles are going to be.
I didn't see anything about the heights, that was a question I had.
So that, that objectionable white light, which is probably going to be on all night, would shine into the backyards of those residences. So I think that's another factor. We need to consider keeping the, the poles short and having the light warm.
Good point. Charlene?
Thank you. As far as the height of the buildings, particularly in the front of the property, I don't have a problem with them being taller than 30 feet. I think it's appropriate for that type of, of, of design, especially in the front of the property. I agree with Frank on the lighting, the pole lighting. The building code is going to require that each apartment at whatever, at any egress.
That's right.
Entrance has to have.
Have a light.
Light. And it said artificial lighting to provide adequate illumination. And it's, it's a 780 CMR, I think it's 1205.3.
I didn't see any light fixture type though for that.
I did not either. And in, in some cases, although it might be interior, not exterior, there is a required illumination. But I'm sure that's going to be looked at very closely, you know, by the building commissioner because they have to meet the building code.
Correct.
They don't need to go beyond what the illumination is, but I agree that, I hope we're doing like, you know, shorter pole street lighting and not big, huge.
Correct.
Poles for there. Regarding the building size and also the community building, I think the community building would be a benefit to the residents, but if it's really not required and there are other options to have an onsite office, which could be incorporated into one of the apartment buildings. But also, one thing to keep in mind, any changes that are conditioned by the ZBA have to be economically feasible. It can't cost more than what they are proposing the cost to be now. So if there are changes being made, they need to be very, the board needs to be very, meaning the zoning board, needs to be very careful because you can't require something that is going to make this unaffordable for the developer.
I need to make a comment on that. I, I think it's a slightly different standard. I think it's, if, if the changes required make the project uneconomic.
Yes.
It's not, it's not any individual, okay, fine.
I, I will take that. But if they do do away with the, the community building out front, then I think it does open up to make some of the rear buildings smaller, perhaps shorter, maybe more ranch style. I, I, I like the idea that was proposed by an abutter to do the cottage style. However, that is going to be more expensive to build individual units than if you build a multi-unit building.
Right.
So there may be able to be a way to reduce the height of those buildings so that they're not as impactful to the neighbors to the south. Because I am, I am concerned about that, you know. And as far as signage, I have no concern and, and I think they'll figure that out in a, in a good way.
Okay, Bob?
All right, well, let's, let's start with the signage because it's on my mind. The only signage that I don't, I think, it looks like they're going to need stop signs at the, at those cross points where the parking, where the road sort of makes a.
A T.
T. So I, I do think that that is an issue that needs to be addressed is there's, because you can't let everybody just think they can go. So something on that order is a concern to me that without any signage on that at all, everybody will think they have the right of way to go through.
Especially if it goes to one way, it's almost like, I'm just going to continue to go zooming right around there, there's no reason for me to stop. And this is going to be, you know, heavy residential, heavy pedestrian potentially at some certain times. So I, I think you, you got a good point there.
And the way, and the way this is laid out, there are, there will have to be some, it can be one lane, but there's going to be two-way traffic on it for those little end, end.
End pieces, correct.
Okay, so if, if we do shorten the, the width of the, or, of the width of the road, that means 10 feet or eight feet, at least we could bring the back of the, of those houses up eight feet closer in without too much issue there. I, I tend to, our, our town's bylaw is 30 feet. I think that the planning board should, should indicate that. But I, I, at the same time, I think maybe a waiver in the front, as Charlene said, makes a lot of sense. And then finally, lighting. We're throwing it all into one type of lighting. There is the lighting on the, the units themselves to, to light up the front of the house. There's the, the pathway lighting and then there's the roadway lighting. And each of those is going to need a different application, all of which need to have real concerns about, you know, downward lighting. How many poles are you going to need so that nobody, you don't even want the people in these homes to see the, the roadway stuff? So it, it's going to take a lot of, of care to have some lighting on that road at, at 2:00 in the morning. Because you don't want to do, you don't want to do motion detectors because that would wake everybody up. So it's got to stay on, it's got to have a certain level of lighting for security and for, for, for people driving in. And then you need pathway lighting, which is probably, should, should be on a photo sensitive control that will come on when it gets dark and, and just lights up, you know, you don't need very much to see the path. And then the, the ones on the, on the buildings that are also required, those should be on, on photo sensors perhaps. And, and, but they all need to be LED and they all need to go, have a downward focus. And I agree with, with Frank that warmer is probably better in this case.
Good, Warren?
Well, I'll start with the lighting since I was there. I agree with Frank's comments with respect to color intensity of the light. I think the, the height of the light poles is critical. It, it certainly shouldn't ever permit anything to get off the site into the neighbors' homes. I would think that same concern would, I'd issue it, I'd give it with respect to those residents of the development. They don't wish to have, be doing shadow pictures on their living room wall just from the, the lighting in the street. So I think that while I don't have a specific must-have with respect here, I think the color intensity, the height of the poles, the number of light poles and their, their construction, their design ought to be a very important consideration with the idea of minimizing the amount of light required and ensuring that every bit that is required is present. With respect to the 30 feet of height, I don't see any reason to even think about waiving that requirement. It seems to me there's more than a few opportunities in the proposal to make sure that that is not even asked to be waived, even though it's not technically an absolute requirement. Back, and I'll finish up with, you know, it seems to me that the, the size of the buildings that are across the back of this property are just totally incongruous with, with the neighborhood. Right over the fence is a different neighborhood, I grant you that. It's a residential neighborhood, it's one that was put in fairly recently by Chatham Standards. And the homes there certainly didn't expect to be having, you know, buildings of that height right up against, quote unquote, close to the property line that are due to even geographic elevation, they're even higher than that if it were a level playing surface. I mean, they, it's just totally inconceivable that you would say they're in, what's their, our design here, compatible with the, the neighborhood. I was concerned that my feeling in this respect would perhaps fall on deaf ears only because there's no other options. But I have seen some presentations and discussion here tonight, which would suggest there are other options. Once we shrink the size of the roadways, once we consider the size of the community building and the office that's required for the management office and potentially consider some other factors, moving them back from the property line because they could be moved further back. It would seem to me there is ample opportunity to explore alternatives to having buildings of the size that are in the designs that I've seen. And so I'd be strongly in favor of requiring that there be some alternatives proposed. And then to the extent they have problems because they're uneconomic or other issues that are raised by that, I would really hope that the ZBA and the town would require some, some sensitivity to the compatibility with the neighbors. And that's with respect to those buildings, it's respect to the lighting, it's with respect to the, the screening, geographic screening, potentially fencing and all other types of issues. Because clearly the neighborhoods that abut these property, this property, you know, deserve some consideration that is perhaps beyond what might be there if there were nothing but fields on the other side of the property line. So at any rate, that's my strong feeling and I think it's consistent with what, what Catherine had mentioned at the beginning. So I would only wish to summarize by saying I thoroughly endorse everything that Carolyn, Catherine mentioned.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Catherine does have her hand up.
Okay, Catherine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just wanted to brief, I'll just try to briefly comment that even looking at the site plan design as it is now, the master plan, it's actually very simple. It's a very simple rearrangement of space that it'll take a little bit of measure, even if we didn't reduce the size of the community building and do the one-way roads and so on. It's just, it's almost just a question of flipping the location of the buildings on the southern border with the road that's on the southern border. Just switch those two around. Yeah, and that, it'll take a little bit of measuring, maybe we have to move a smaller building to where the bigger building is, but it could be easily done. And then evergreen vegetative screening can also be easily added on that southern border. So I think those issues can be fairly easily addressed. So, but thank you, Warren, for your encouragement.
My suggestion was turn, turn the two on the ends the other way, push them up into where the parking is. Bring the road behind the other two and, and puts, put a little bit of barrier on, on the, on the southern border. And you've, you've got the same homes there that you had before.
Yes, exactly.
Good, good suggestions. I have a, a couple of refinements on, on some of the other comments, the board members. I'll start with the lighting. There is pole lighting for, along the roadway and it's on the exterior perimeter road. And then there is some more, different type of pole lighting that is adjacent to where the common area is. All right, adjacent to the road. And then the bollard lighting on the cross paths. I think the pole lighting, my experience is even with commercial sites, nothing more than 15 feet. But I would say, even in this case, I would make them 12 feet as height on, on the fixtures. That's, that's a good practice. The, the foot candle is what I looked at. I have, I had many sites that I've reviewed and in particular, when you're talking about a residential site like this, the foot candles shouldn't be any higher than, than five. They have some, the, the higher poles are not the issue because they're so high. But the foot candles on the bollards, they have those, some at 10 and 12 foot candles, that is way too high. You don't need to, especially on, on a, on a pathway like this. So I think that there should be a criteria that we recommend that the foot candles on, on any of, the highest foot candles should be no higher than five. On this, that's been my experience associated with this. The, there is a, a missing connection on the sidewalk out on, on 28. It goes to the east, but it doesn't go to the west. And I'm wondering why doesn't it go to the west on the edge of the property? It should to connect up with a future sidewalk that would be there if it's not there now. I mean, 28, we've, it started with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center redesigned by Mastod and there are sidewalks on both sides of the road. That should be the practice here. And this would be a perfect example where it would be, I think there's only one other property that's connected between here and could easily extend this, whether it's by Mastod or, or the town, to make this connection. But that west, and, west entrance, there is no connection going to the west on that. So I would recommend that we have that be included. Yes, Frank?
This is just a question, is there a standard preferred width for a sidewalk and is? And is, are they using that?
My, my experience with sidewalks is, uh, preferred width is, uh, up to like five, four and five feet. Sometimes you can get, if there is a, a crunch in a, in a width space, the minimum would be three and I think that's an ADA requirement for accessibility.
Okay, so, so the ones on the.
Four feet, four feet.
What the public will be using?
Um, I didn't see, uh, I didn't see what they had for a width, uh, if they had it on the plan. I don't recall.
I think a sidewalk is a sidewalk, whether it's in the site or outside of the site. So it'd have to be ADA compliant.
Right.
No, no, but I'm, I'm thinking it should be wider.
They do show in the middle of the plan, um, kind of up, up at the top on Route twenty-eight, they show a five-foot width, a five-foot width mention.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the height of the buildings, um, we, we run across this on many site applications and there have been buildings that have come before us and, uh, ZBA and that thirty-foot height has been maintained. I don't see a reason why that should be adjusted here. Um, it sets a bad precedent. Um, you could get the next site, next site, next site, or.
There are no precedents in zoning.
Well, that's tr- that's true, that's true. Um, I, I would prefer not to get into the weeds associated with, uh, exceptions to the height. Um, I think that's all I have. I think the recommendations about these setback from the rear on these four buildings in the back, I, I think that there needs to be some more separation than that. And with the reduced height, that's gonna be a way to mitigate that abutters, uh, impact any butters. So I think the suggestions that the other board members have are excellent and we should try to, um, roll those into all our comments. Okay, moving on to item five?
So five and six I kinda took together. Um, stormwater and drainage facilities for five and then for six was water supply and sewerage disposal. So these are things that would probably come before peer review when a consultant is hired or consultants, depending on how they try to do it. Um, there is right now, there appears to be adequate, uh, stormwater and drainage facilities with the proposal. Um, and then as far as it will be using town water and town sewer and as you know from talking to DPW with regard to the, um, West Chatham, uh, this has already been factored in, so there will be no concerns with that. There should be no concerns.
I'll, I'll just add my, um, point here. I didn't see any issues with the adequacy, certainly they, they have this, uh, covered. Um, my, um, recommendation, and they do show, uh, sedimentation saw erosion control devices around the perimeter of the site. However, what's the first thing that goes in? The underground structures. You got the underground structures, you got catch basins, they're, they, they don't show that these on a temporary basis should have some erosion control devices on it. Otherwise, everything is gonna get silted in. So there should be, they should go beyond what they would normally do for erosion control devices for the, any kind of inlet structure that gets into the underground infiltration system. Even during, until the construction is completely done, then you pull those off. That would be my recommendation. I didn't have any other comments in here. Any others by the board members? All right, let's move on to the next, uh.
So seven is the adequacy type arrangement of trees, shrubs and other landscape uh, constituting a visual and/or noise buffer between applicants and adjoining lands, including the maximum retention of existing vegetation. So what I had for this one is that, um, I do think it's a positive that they had the landscape plans have been prepared and stamped by a registered Massachusetts landscape architect. Um, and the, the developer is proposing to keep eight of the existing trees on site. There had been some mention at the ZBA meeting. Um, there had been a request to maybe consider keeping more of the trees, um, wherever possible. Um, and then there was also some things about increasing this, the, um, the screening and the vegetation to the abutting property owners like Catherine had mentioned, um, some additional evergreens or something like that to beef up those, um, abutters. So I would recommend that you say something along those lines.
Any comments about this one?
Concur.
Okay.
I concur with the objective and, uh, in order to achieve that objective and reduce the, um, interference with the neighbors' joy of life, um, I would suggest that we recommend that they perhaps not put in the minimum-sized trees that would normally be put in, but more, uh, more mature-sized trees so that the buffer could actually be largely in place, uh, as, once it's installed. Um, I've, you know, I don't know to what extent we should get in the middle of saying exactly how high the tree should be. But I do think there ought to be a substantial, uh, buffer from vegetation, um, immediately after installation as opposed to having to wait ten years.
Hi, Catherine? I mean, Christine. I'll get to you next, Catherine.
Actually, it's Charlene, but that's okay. I get called everything.
I got Catherine on my mind.
I, I, I disagree with Warren on the more mature trees. They are astronomically expensive.
Right.
And as, um, Frank and I are whispering here, he, they, they don't do as well.
Right.
Um, the smaller, the, the, the more youthful the tree is, the better it has a chance to establish and grow. Um, but if it's a mature tree, it, it's very expensive, first of all, and the, the survival is not always great.
Okay, Catherine, you have a comment?
Um, yes, actually, I was gonna agree with Warren, but I think what Charlene said has changed my opinion. Um, uh, we do want trees that will thrive well. Um, there are ways to create landscaped vegetative screenings that are phased. I mean, that might be somewhat of an expense. I have done it on some projects I've worked on, um, where you have some, um, you have screening immediately. There is a need for immediate screening and that's the only problem with the immature trees is that you have to wait some years before there's actually screening there. But there's a way to put in some, um, maybe non-evergreens that provide immediate screening and that then, uh, as the more, as the other trees, the evergreens mature, they'll pro- provide the permanent screening. A landscape architect can design that. I have no idea what the expense will be, but it can be done.
Okay, um, I, I had one comment here and I'm not sure it, it's, it's a landscaping comment. I, I, I think the size of the tree is an important thing, not to go too big with it. Um, what I'm concerned with is if you put, uh, all this landscaping around, where is the snow stockpiled? It's a common question that the board has on sites that are overly developed like this and there's a lot of surface area in here and if this gets plowed, where does the snow get stockpiled? Uh, if it gets stockpiled on the sidewalks, uh, guess what? That's a safety issue and I'm a little bit concerned about that. So I think we should make a comment about this because if there are just gonna be an adjustment and some arrangements here, I think that there needs to be some snow stockpile areas, um, dedicated. Um, I, I don't have any other, uh, comments associated with, with, uh, the landscaping piece. So if we can, um, move to the next couple, I think there's not as many comments going on these last few here, is that right, Christine?
So I would say like eight, nine and ten, we can pretty much take together. Um, you know, they do show a mix of outdoor uses in that center area recreation. Um, they do show the landscape plan, so that, that's not concerning. We've talked about the lighting and the abutters. Um, we haven't really spent, spent much, any time on noise, um, but I think that speaks for itself. I don't, y- you know, I mean, unless somebody's using it as a raceway around if you're moving the outside, if you're moving the, the driveway to the outside edges. I mean, that's the only thing where I could see a noise, a noise thing being an issue. Um, pavement markings, they don't really show that on the plan. The fire department will have certain requirements as far as that. Uh, but again, you know, I, I think we want everything shown on the plans. Um, and I would even say with, uh, with the attention to any adequacy of structures and stuff, again, that's, um, number eleven of your criteria. That will be handled under peer consultant. And the ZBA did, um, get permission for two of their members to work with staff, um, in, in selecting and, and moving forward with some type of peer review. So, and again, you will get other opportunities as it appears. Um, I think those are the biggest things with regard to your criteria. If you wanna go through that first and then I would just offer some general comments.
Um, Warren, why don't you, let's see if we could take the group of the last four together.
Um, with respect, it goes back to lighting again. It, to the extent that it may not be determined exactly where the roadway around in the development will be, uh, I would say if it is moved to the back of the property, I think that's a big plus from many points of view. But it also means that the headlights from any, any automobile that's going all the way around is going to potentially, until something is in the way, is gonna shine right into the neighbors', uh, living rooms. So that's fencing, it's, um, landscape, um, design and so on. And I think that, um, ultimately, uh, the design of the site, the location of the roads, um, has to be done concurrently with the landscape design, which will deal with the downsides of wherever those roads end up being. Um, because again, the headlights on a car, uh, especially if you get a big SUV, they're, you know, four feet off the ground to start with. Um, so I would only make that point of, which I think's already been made in other ways, but saying you, you really can't recommend exactly what you recommend specifically 'cause there's no specific final design.
Yep. Um, Bob, any comment?
I don't have anything else.
Charlene?
I'm just trying to remember, is there a fence being proposed around this?
There is a wall on portions of the rear, uh, because of the slope, but I'm not, I'm not aware of a fence.
So there is a retaining wall shown on the plan in the, the, um, southwest corner? I do not see any fencing around.
I, I think particularly on the, the rear of the property and maybe going around the corners there on the east and west side.
There's a retaining wall on the right, on the, uh,
Yeah.
southeast corner too.
I, I think some kind of fencing is, is gonna be necessary regardless.
Right.
Um, I think that will help. And I'm not talking a split rail fence either. I'm talking some kind of a, a stockade, you know, nice-looking stockade fence, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think these walls are only three or four feet tall. They deal with some of the grades, so they're not, not high. But there is, uh, there's always a concern, once you get up to that height, if there's anybody that's wandering around there over the side. Usually, there should be something to provide some protection. Frank?
Yeah, I, you know, as with respect to the foot candle issue, I, I think that the plan should specify what the temperature is of the lights. In other words, is it two thousand five, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand in Kelvin? So we know that, we can hold them to that.
Okay, good point. And Catherine, I see you have some comments?
Yes. I just wanted to agree with Charlene. I think especially along this, the southern, uh, border, uh, as well as probably a li- a little way to the north on both the east and west sides, uh, a good opaque, you know, solid fence is a good idea in addition to the landscape evergreen screening. Um, so I just wanted to agree with Charlene on that.
Okay. Uh, um, do we want to go to a public comment first before you do a general wrap-up there, Christine?
That's fine.
Okay.
Good catch on the Scribner's notes and I think those are important.
Right, so that's, we need to get those across, but.
So, uh, why don't we begin with Rick Lovett? I know that you came before us several times before and you wanted to get your comments in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Rick Lovett and I certainly appreciate the amount of effort you're putting into this. It's very important. Uh, just, just to begin with, it's more than the southern border. The, uh, this is my property. So, we're working as a neighborhood group for people who live along Barn Hill Road and along Jesse's Landing to deal with the primary issue here. And it's been, you, you said it, respect the residential neighborhoods. That is indeed a requirement, a specification in the town's RFP, spelled out. Uh, also respect the historic business district. That's spelled out in the RFP. And so many people who rose at the ZBA meeting last week commented, both the neighbors here, uh, and the people, but particularly the historical commission and the historic business district commission, were very concerned. We are all concerned that this development, this subdivision, which is the largest housing development in Chatham in fifty years.
Can you turn your pointer, your light off?
Am I, am I? Yes.
Overexuberant.
How do you turn it off?
I don't know, put it down.
That works.
Sorry, I.
No, I, no, I. And, and many of the, uh, solutions that you're talking about today will help. But there's really nothing that's going to help the residential neighborhoods other than what Warren talks about and that, and, and all of you have talked about. And that is creating smaller-scale homes there. We can keep the unit count that they want, forty-eight, which is way above the ten units per acre that you and we all agree is appropriate for West Chatham Center. It's sixteen units per acre. We're not, we're not saying to you or the ZBA or anyone in town that they have to cut back their unit count. What they, what we are asking them to do is respect the neighborhood. And as I say, that is embedded in the RFP. And I have to say that that has been ignored, both that requirement in the RFP to respect the neighborhoods, has been ignored by this developer and unfortunately by town officials. I met with the developers' team, all seven of them, uh, for a couple of hours and expressed these concerns. And that's where I developed an alternative site plan, which shows down here and around here, smaller cottage-style cottage courts that are consistent with the homes that are here and here and along Barn Hill Road. The homes on Barn Hill Road and in Jesse's Landing are one and one-and-a-half-story residential buildings. You cannot put a three-story, large apartment building within feet and that's the problem here. Gotta do this again. Um, these buildings are within feet of the back property lines of our, of our, they're seventeen feet off the property line and they're thirty-five feet tall. By all means, respect your sixty-foot height limit and even insist, I would say, on your density limit of ten units per acre. That's a good negotiating start. We can go higher, but they have to, the, these developers have to understand that in Chatham particularly, they must respect the neighborhood. I have, uh.
Your, um, your, um, information that you provided us was included in the planning board packets.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I've made some prepared comments and I'll try, I'll try to run through these quickly.
Thank you.
In, uh, criteria number four, location, size, design, general site compat- compatibility of buildings. Location, the large three-story multifamily buildings located a few feet from small one and one-and-a-half stories. Single-family homes are not compatible. The, uh, on size, there is no meaningful variation in size as specified in the town's RFP. The town's RFP actually says they want a mix of sizes to accommodate different family sizes, but also to be compatible with the neighborhood. That has not been done. but also to be compatible with the neighborhood. That has not been done here. And to your comment, Charlene, yes, any changes to the developer's proposal must be economic or not uneconomic. But there are many ways to deal with that. If building smaller, no, I can't even get a red one. If building cottage courts along the southern and southwestern side, 15 or 16 smaller units is more expensive than building four of these large apartments, I understand that. In my proposal to you, I showed you Strandway, which is a lovely eight-unit attached townhouse, small cottage attached off Sea Quanset and Strandway, Sea Strand Road. If you haven't been there, you've got to go see it. It's what's required on the southern and southwestern side here. It would be less expensive than, because they're attached, than building separately. But even if it's more expensive, there are other ways for the developer to cut other costs. And one of them is, and it's actually specified in the RFP, to negotiate with the town a reduction in their cost. For example, the developer has proposed to pay the town the $2 million it paid for the property. It doesn't have to do that. The other two proposers did not propose that. They could reduce their cost $2 million right there. The town also indicated in the RFP that they would negotiate for the infrastructure to lower the cost. So there are many, I agree with you, it will increase the cost to be respectful of the neighborhood, no question about it. But we can reduce the costs, the developer's costs, so that it is not uneconomic to respect the neighborhood. One of the things that I think is so important here, again, the RFP specifies that the traffic flow be internal. I like very much Catherine's suggestion, except for one, one reason, and I think it was brought up here. It would, I think you mentioned it, Warren. It is not appropriate to build a roadway next to someone's backyard. You've got noise, you've got litter, you've got glare, and you can't solve that problem with fences or shrubbery. The RFP was sensitive to that. The traffic flow should be internal. And what we have here are parking lots and roads, and parking lots and roads. This is, this parking lot and this road is 15 feet off my property line. It shouldn't be there. There's a dumpster there, too. Imagine that. A dumpster next to your backyard. I don't think any of you would like that. So as we redesign this to help the developer make, create a model for affordable housing in Chatham going forward, this is only the first out of many that are going to be needed, affordable housing developments. It needs to be a model for the future. So let's not put roads and dumpsters and parking lots next to people's backyard.
You almost wrapped up.
Almost wrapped up.
Thank you.
The site will be clear-cut. There are a couple of mature trees on the site that the developer has agreed to maintain, but it will be clear-cut. And anyone bordering on that site is just simply going to be facing large buildings that are incompatible with their neighborhood, and we have to deal with that. And I think you're making a great start here, and I compliment you on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, so there's other public comment. Oh, let me take one from...
Yes, you have two, you have two online. One is SB and the other one is G.
Is that Stephen Buckley?
He had his hand up first, yes.
Yes.
If that's who that is.
If you could, go ahead.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, it is Stephen Buckley.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
And I should have mentioned this before, I'd like to try to hold the comments to five minutes, if at all possible.
Okay, I may undercut that.
Good, thank you.
We'll see, we'll see. Thank you. I understand the previous speaker's desire not to have roadways right beside the property line, but I think that might be a consideration in the sense that it, if properly done, that if you look at the drawing that's being shown now with the U created by the current parking area pavement and so forth, that if it was on the outside of the units, so if the buildings were to switch places with the parking area now, and the parking area goes all the way around the perimeter, it does provide much more of a setback for those buildings. And I think a, an additional benefit would be that the U created that you're looking at right now for pavement will now become much larger, in the sense that it would be more, it would provide a larger U, which would be more parking spaces. And along those lines, also parking areas, one thing I wanted to bring up was that if we're trying to create a family-friendly place where people will feel comfortable having their kids run around and ride bikes, or walk around, hopefully not dart out into traffic, but yes, put their bikes someplace, that there be bike racks, there be some area set aside for that. And with looking forward, and not just in the rearview mirror of what has been in the past, is that electric bikes could also fill, you know, where adults would be using electric bikes to get around and go to the store with a basket on the back, you know, down to Ocean State or someplace like that to run an errand. And so they need to have a place to go to, otherwise people will be dragging them into their units to plug in. And I don't think, this has not been a problem because electric bikes haven't been a thing. So anyway, I just wanted to point out that there needs to be some multimodal pedestrian, bicycles, electric vehicles, and so, anticipating what we will be seeing in the future. And so, yes, on the lighting, I would say, yes, anything pointed down. I have, used to live in a townhouse development in Maryland in suburban Washington, DC. And so when I came back to Chatham, and we lived on this property for seven years, my wife, my family and I, in the back, it was nice and dark, felt like you really were in the woods, and I realized that we're not going to get that again. But the idea is that, having been in suburbia down there, where every, there's no such thing as too much light. So, yes, if they could be pointed down to just cover those areas, and so nobody should be able to see, in my opinion, a light bulb from an adjoining property. It should not be all lit up like some kind of, you know, commercial 24-hour facility. And I think that's conducive with what you see along Route 28, of course, the new roadway there with, they call it tulips, I think, is that what they're called, when they point down and you don't see the light unless you're looking directly straight up into it. And so anyway, yes, I just wanted, I'm looking forward, envisioning the idea that when we sold this property, I was envisioning some nice neighborly-looking cozy kind of place where you'd be intrigued to say, gee, who lives down there? And you might want to walk down and visit your friends. And, oh, the other part was, yeah, if there was someplace on the green where you could present, have something like, if somebody's getting married or if there's some graduation thing, people put up tents now, yes, fine, put up a tent, have there be a graduation party there and, or wedding or whatever, anniversary type of gathering. I think it's important, considering that these are apartments, that there needs to be a place where people can walk across, walk 100 feet or so, and go to some community group, place where they can have gatherings, birthday parties and so forth, and provide that sense of neighbor, neighborhood, neighborliness, neighborhoodliness, I guess, that type of thing, where people feel like they have a home and it's not just some transient rental place. So.
You almost wrapped up, Stephen.
Crosswalks, I brought that up. Yeah, yep, yep. Raised crosswalks, I brought that up, too, at one of the other meetings a couple of months ago. So the idea that people won't be flying into the complex, you know, regardless of how wide it is, people will come flying in unless they have a reason to slow down, and raised crosswalks will do that. Thank you very much.
That's good suggestions. Thank you. We have one other person, G. I don't know the name, if you'd like to state your name.
Thank you, I apologize. It's Elaine Gibbs.
Oh, Elaine, of course.
Yes. First of all, I would suggest that between now and your next meeting, you go up to the Village at Nauset Green. This was a Penrose project. I've been up there. I'm very concerned after what I saw. Their density up there, it's on 11.2 acres, and based on that, they have six units per acre. This is three acres. We have 16 units per acre. I would debate that this, these drawings you have here are to scale. This entire area is going to be clear-cut. They also said they're saving eight trees, which they thought was really wonderful. It's, you're going to be able to see the back from the street. These buildings are huge. The smaller ones are 50 feet wide, and the larger ones are 70 feet wide. To put that into perspective, if you look at the brick section of our community center, the old school, those dimensions there, these are going to be 70% of that size. They're huge. And there's nine of them. I think, they still have nine. Anyway, when they first came out with this proposal, one of the things they said in terms of parking was, we are intentionally keeping the parking number per unit low to make people walk, bike, or take public transportation. I was pretty offended by that. It's sort of like, let them eat cake, let them figure it out. These are homes for people. I don't think that's appropriate, particularly since there's not a lot of places to walk to right now. There's, there's no grocery stores, there's no pharmacies. If someone in the house gets sick, they'd have to take public transportation. What wasn't mentioned in the presentation to the ZBA is of these limited parking spaces, 14 of them are electric, for electric vehicles. I assume that hasn't changed, but that didn't come up. Now, in addition to the fact that I find it hard to believe that people who are going to be living here are going to run out and buy themselves an electric vehicle, if you have seen the charging stations down in, down past the center of town at Eldridge, they're huge, they take up space, they look like outhouses, and that's, they're going to be scattered, 14 of them on this property in addition to everything else, lighting.
Elaine, can I interrupt you on that one? Because, because the code requires that number of wired poles. It does not require them to actually install them at this time, but it is the code that they have to do that. So I'm not sure.
Well, that's all it is, wiring, because they had said that they had to have the actual spaces. So that should be cleared up. I would recommend you ask. They also said there's only going to be two dumpsters, one on one end and one on the other. And if that's all there is for disposal of garbage, there are going to be, there could potentially be 200 people in this unit, in this development with the 86 bedrooms. I would also point out that on the three-bedroom units, by definition, the family is not defined. It can be six unrelated people in a three-bedroom, which would mean to me that if they're unrelated, they could all have cars, which leads me to the fact that, in my view, there has to be assigned parking for people, and there has to be guest parking. Because if those six unrelated people each have a car, and it's not assigned, somebody else, maybe a mother with a couple of kids, is not going to be able to find a parking space when she comes home from work. So I think that those, those things are extremely important in terms of, I like the fact that you're doing angled parking, one way in, one way out. Perpendicular parking with that many spaces would be a disaster. Somebody would get hit. I would also say that in terms of the landscaping, again, the fact that they're only saving eight trees, this is going to be a barren wasteland. If you look at the vegetation that they used up at Nauset Village, that place has been there for five years, and there's virtually no vegetation. The trees still look like saplings. They do not provide any protection. I had asked that they do evergreens, because all of, all of the greenery, all of the plantings that they have here are basically native shrubs and deciduous trees. They are not going to do any blocking at all. You will be able to see from Main Street all the way back to those buildings in the back for the next 20 years. And it's going to be pavement, and it's going to be massive buildings, and I think people are going to be shocked once the bulldozers come in there and you see what's left, and then you see what goes up, and there will be no going back. So those are my comments right now. Again, I think you should go to Nauset Green. I was very concerned at the condition of the place. There's no privacy for people. There's no private space for anyone. And their center, that center thing that they have here, that's supposed to be multipurpose and play areas and stuff, it's really tragic what they have up there. Nobody would go out and sit out in that area. They just wouldn't. It's, it's not conducive to any private gatherings. If there's some way that they can make it that these units, number one, are smaller, they certainly aren't higher, and that people have some green space in their backyards, behind their units, so that they don't have to be looking at pavement and, you know, strangers. Because I think there's going to be high turnover in these areas. People are not going to be able to save money if they end up getting a raise. At some point, they're going to have to leave, you know? I would like this to be a place where people can actually consider it a home and stay with their children and have a normal life where they actually have some privacy and their own parking space. So those are my comments for now. I don't want to hold you up, it's going to be a long night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Please.
Hello, Carolyn McClellan. I'm Chair of the Community Housing Partnership. One, you're doing a wonderful job. I appreciate all the efforts you're making here. I do have a couple of comments. One is on the parking spaces, however all this ends up. I do want you to be aware that a statewide statistic, which is also the same for Barnstable County and for Chatham within a margin of error, is that 30% of the people in Massachusetts are one-person households. The next 30% are two-person households, which could be adult and a child or a couple. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about the spaces. We have, I think it's 16 one-bedroom units in this, in this development. The odds are that a lot of those are just going to be one single person. I mean, that's just the reality. So when you're, I mean, I don't want to build something and then not have room for parking, but I really think we're going to have more single people than you anticipate or idealize. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at those numbers. In regards to the, we just had our meeting earlier today, and we're very supportive of the AMI distribution and the number, the bedroom distribution, the number of units with the different sized bedrooms. And we think that's, you know, that's really, we're really supportive of that. Looking at the decision, can you put up the diagram of the layout again, if possible? Yeah, that again, if possible, yeah, that one. I didn't realize we had the option to reconfigure at this point. And I think that, you know, I advocated for many years for affordable housing in this town, and I'm really invested in getting this project done, but I also really want most people to be happy with it. And I don't want it to then become the reason we don't do more. So, anything you all can do to make this the most beautiful and accepted property would be appreciated. And like, just looking, personally, I don't, the, the, the middle, the total middle corridor there with the management building and all the green space, I would put the three other apartment buildings there and have this whole area, a smaller management building and the green space on the south. And then you still have the roadway further up there, and you got the buildings there. The height thing, there's a lot of big buildings in Chatham, maybe nowadays, you're not, you're capping it at the 30 feet, but I'm not as upset about exceeding that in some areas. I would be upset if, obviously, if I was an owner on that southern, southern edge, that seems a little extreme for them to have to tolerate that kind of exposure there where it's so high right on their property line. But if you got that, that row out of there and then put a much smaller management building in the back and then the green space, that would just be my off the top of the head suggestion. We don't need that big thing in the middle that, look at all that real estate that could be housing and parking too also, but, but we'll leave them to, to hash that out. But again, I really want to have it to be something that the majority of the people, no, everybody's not going to love it, but the majority of the people are going to enjoy it. And just to speak to a couple of the comments that were made earlier, the Nauset Green property, although it was the same company, is not the same thing here. I, I think the aesthetic quality of these houses, I think they look really nice. I think they, they will blend in with the community, I think they did a good job on their architectural design, so I'm not fearful of that. And, and then also the idea about the type of, we always idealize who's going to live here, it's going to be a family, or it's going to be this, or it's going to be that. You know, it might not be the best fit for people to start out, if you need a house, you need a house, you just need someplace to live. But there'll be a lot of folks here who will be maybe, if we go with the single folks, that their earnings aren't going to change over the next 10, you know, they're earning their, the most that they're earning right now, that's not going to fluctuate for their lives. I know a lot of people come to me, they're in their, their 40s, they don't have kids anymore, or their 50s, they're making $50,000 a year and they can't find a place to live. That's going to be the type of person that's going to end up here, and it's going to be a perfect, wonderful home for them. So, don't get hung up on the idea of who you want or who you think is going to move here, this will fit, there, there are people that this will be the perfect fit for. It won't be the perfect fit for everybody, but it will be the perfect fit for some folks. And so, I would just lean into it as hard as you can to get the best design as possible, and I don't want a coalition of angry neighbors forever facing me every time I do a housing project. So, try to accommodate their, them as much as possible. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. I think Catherine, you have other comments you'd like to make?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to make one comment in response to something that Mr. Buckley mentioned. I'm just looking at the site plan, you know, I'm just thinking if we flipped where the buildings are and the roadways, and also Carolyn was mentioning, like, put, just put more buildings in the middle and have the roadway be a single, single direction, but still that, and if we, and if the buildings are somewhat smaller, as people have suggested, and then have quite a large landscape buffer around the edge of the whole property, I think that could accommodate Mr. Levitt's concerns as well as not sacrifice too much of the, you know, the number of units that they're offering. And it's also, I think, in a sense, it would provide greater safety, because look at the way the buildings are now. If a child, for example, lives in a building, they have to cross the roadway to get to the green space or to get to the community center. Whereas if you flipped it around and put the roads on the outside, that, nobody has to cross any roadways to get to the interior space or to the community center. I do though, want to be careful about making this suggestion, because Mr. Levitt, as the butters, brought up the concern of roadways close to the border of the property also causes noise and headlights, so we want to make sure that it could be done and still leave enough of a buffer to the border of the property. Anyway, just an idea that came to mind, but I think what we're looking at, from everything I've heard from everybody tonight, is we are going to be looking at requests for some redesign and reconfiguration of the space. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Before, any other comments, because Christine would like to have some closing comments herself. Frank?
I, I would just like to say the, the suggestion to move the buildings into the center island, I think I would be supportive of, of, of that. I think it's a very creative thought.
Yeah, I, I, it makes so much sense to me. You then, you then have more space at the bottom that's also.
For a buffer.
Buffer and a park.
Yep.
And.
That's true, you could put the park there, too.
Yeah, you put the whole parking, park there and, and everything, and my, the one thing we haven't talked about as a board is, is the density and whether 48 is too many. And it is more than we were anticipating for the West Chatham, but this is a dip, this is, this is its own thing. If it's done tastefully, I, I, I think we, we could see how, I, I could see how you could do 48 in this space, but I, I think we should try to do it without raising the heights, and I, I think we can do it without having these big, long buildings. We, we, if they just go back to our, our design and put just little cutouts and, so that it's not these squares, I think that, that, that's more in line with the, the vision of our, our, our design code. So, those are just things that I would suggest that we, we give as suggestions to them.
Okay. Christine, why don't you, you had to summarize something.
Yeah, so what I would say to start with is, I am not sure what kind of, well, what kind of revisions can be made. I mean, we're reviewing with regard to site, your site plan review criteria. I don't know realistically how far along this is, whether or not some of these major changes can happen. That being said, you might as well put into the, the letter whatever you want, and, you know, maybe it can happen, maybe it can't, I don't know that, as far as like moving the roadway to the outside or moving some buildings to the interior. So, I want everybody to keep that in mind, because I, I don't know the answer to that question. The other thing I was going to just say about, like, on the front cover of the thing, you know, we found some, some typos of the names, the lighting plan is not actually part of the plan set, like, it's part of the plan set, but it's not in the sheet table. They identify the, the property as being 1533 Main Street, there are other things that say 1533 and Zero Main Street. So, those are all things that should be, I know they sound kind of minor in nature, but it's important to have everything spelled out on the plan set, because not everybody reads the documents at the other, at the end of the day. The other thing that should be very clear, and it should be on the plan set, and I would encourage this for any plans that you're reviewing under regular site plan review, is that all waivers must be clearly stated, any waiver request on that front cover sheet.
Good point.
I think another big thing, you know, I, I don't know that there were all of the details in the plan set, like, like I said, with regard to, you know, all of the signage or all of the poles, the heights of the poles, the, the foot candles, like, you know, some of you had mentioned. I think it's important that the details clearly be stated in that plan set. And I know that they're calling this a permitting plan set, and this is not for construction, but you're only seeing the planning, the planning permitting set, you're not seeing the construction set. So, everything should be there, plain and simple. I would say also on, they showed the test pit location information on one page, and then they showed the data on another page. Those should both be on the same page, those are common, common things that, you know, with drafting. So, I, I think it's important, it's a first through, you've all gone through, I think the dialogue today was fabulous.
It's, it's going to be a longer recommendation letter than we normally would put together.
And then I know with regard to the, the question about the traffic study, there is, the traffic study that's in here is in the middle of the big package, roughly, that's where you'll find that, and then that, the stormwater stuff is toward the end of this package. So, you had gotten it a couple of weeks ago. And again, like I said, this is a draft, there will be another, another study. So, anything that you think should be out there, ask for in the letter.
Somebody made the comment about dumpsters and two dumpsters for this entire property.
Yeah.
If I was in the northeast building and I had to walk all that way to dump my garbage, there's just no way that, there has to be garbage dumpsters, you know, adjacent to most of these buildings or be, or between two of them, but not, not all of them in one spot. That's just not even feasible.
You know, that's such an obvious thing, yeah.
Especially given that you've got seven or five people with disabilities, how are they, you know, I mean, let's be, let's be a little more conscious of, of that, of that kind of thing.
Yeah, that, that I think is another essential. I, until somebody said it was obvious when it came up. Okay, so, we're, we'll try to get a draft together, I'll work with Christine and, and, and to put together a draft of this. We'll flush it out next week with our meeting, we'll still have enough time before June 1st, which was the requested date on this. All right.
Next week, we meet again next?
We are meeting, we have two public hearings next week.
Right, public hearings?
So, we have, yeah, for the Sylvan, Sylvan Way and then.
I, I will not be here.
Is it an A and R?
But those, it was intended that we were going to just have those two items and just a review of this letter.
So, oh, for, I'm sorry, for next, for next week, you will have an, an A and R for Zero Marketplace, and you'll have Sylvan Way. You were supposed to have another definitive subdivision on 155 Bridge Street, but that is being withdrawn.
Okay, so, just two items. So, I do, I do have on here the annual town meeting discussion. We've had a long night tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you need to continue this to the next meeting. Make, I would take a vote and just continue your discussion.
I don't know that.
Do you need to do that where it's not a public hearing? I think just having it on the agenda.
No, not that I know of, right.
I, I'm not so concerned about that.
Yeah, if it was a public hearing, I could understand that, right. I'm open to deferring that to another day. I think we're going to want to have some discussion on that. So, if the board members want to discuss it tonight, you're welcome to do that, or?
No, thank you.
Okay, I, I'm, I, I wasn't sure that this was.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Catherine, is that you?
I don't want to interrupt you, but I, I would just like to make one comment, I'll try not to make it too long, about the annual town meeting, what occurred there, if I might.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that, as I understand it, we were just a few votes shy of getting the two thirds majority that we needed to pass West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and I wanted to just say that I think under the circumstances where we pushed it to the, to the limit in terms of timing, and we, we got everything cleaned up, but it was really at the last minute. Usually when we put a bylaw amendment before annual town meeting, we take some, at least six months just to do public outreach after the final draft is written. In this case, we really didn't have that much time for that. So, I think, even though we've done a lot of public outreach at every stage of the development of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw, we didn't do it with this final, we didn't have the opportunity to do a lot of it with this final draft. And so, considering those circumstances, I just want to say that I think we did very, very well. The fact that we almost made it just shy a few votes from the two thirds majority, given that we hadn't done a lot of public outreach, I think was an excellent result. So, I just want everyone, as much as you can, not to be dismayed. I think we need to go forward. We've got a great, I think we've got something that's really great, and now we can have the opportunity to do more public interaction, you know, information and listening sessions, and I think we can look forward to a good future for this bylaw. That's all I wanted to comment.
Okay, Bob?
Well, okay. I, I, I hear you, I, I'm pretty, I was pretty disappointed. I think it was the timing and that a lot of people had left and that there was a, a number of, of misinformed people voting about the airport, and, and they all stayed. So, I think that that was unfortunate. My, my request is that we just let this sit, and we don't touch it, because there wasn't anything that anybody said or objected to that we hadn't already discussed, that we hadn't already dealt with. So, I don't think it needs to change, I just think we need to let it come up again the next time and, and do what Catherine said, is sell it a little better. But I don't, I didn't hear people talking about the flaws in it, they just talked about the misinformation in it.
Thanks. I had a lot of things in my head, I haven't put them down yet, so I would prefer to flush some of those out a little bit more and share those with you. I, I guess I have just one comment about when I got appointed to the chair position, I said that I thought it was important that we push this through, and I said that I would push as much as I could to get this on for a May town meeting, I thought it was important, I think the board wanted that. It took longer than I was expecting. We added meetings, I think I was focusing on that outcome of getting it on town meeting, and I didn't spend enough time on the planning side of it. So, that's, that's, that's a flaw that I had on that. I think that if we had a couple of more months to actually put those, meetings out there to the public, we would have been able to resolve this enough. And so, but it's a readjustment that I think I, we would need to do for the, for the next time around, let's put more time in the planning side of it and less worrying about the timing on getting this to town meeting. So, if there's anything else?
Carolyn McClellan again, Chair of the Community Housing Partnership, and you guys did an outstanding, wonderful job. I know you put so many hours in it. I was so excited about it, so disappointed that it didn't pass, and the failure was on the outreach and our committee is 100% behind you to help you, or do whatever we can to a full throated conversation with the public about all these things. We tried to do something last month, there just wasn't enough time to get things together, and it was all the misinformation out there that, that people were making comments on. So, you did a thorough job, so it took you a little longer probably.
Yep.
So, if we can revisit it, and we'll, we'll work with you as best we can to make sure the public understands the value and what this could mean for Chatham in the future. So, thank you.
I'll take you up on that.
Right here, we're committed to it, thank you.
All right, one last comment, Rick.
I echo Carolyn's comments, and I'm disappointed, but I'm not discouraged in the least. I recall, maybe you will as well, perhaps 10 years ago, a thing called the floodplain bylaw. It took two attempts to get it passed. It was so complex, it just needed to be explained, and, and we'll get that done. You'll get community support for it, and we'll get it passed. It was 10 votes shy.
Okay, then, if that wraps up, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I second. All right, Warren?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wurch, have to approve.
Charlie?
Approve.
Frank?
Approve.
And Catherine?
Yes, I approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. And the time is 7:06 PM. And Art Sprouse, I approve. And the time is 7:06 PM.